Have you been fishing?
We went out last week, caught one lake cod.
Okay, well, I got the boat back.
Yes.
It's all a lot of pain.
I bought a new four-stroke.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Did you buy?
For more.
Oh, you did.
At a really good price.
What size?
Ninety.
Eight?
Eighty-eight, ninety. Installed on the roof.
That is a good price.
No, it's just spoken to, you know.
Fifteen grand?
Fifteen grand?
Fifteen grand?
Suzuki ninety was what it was.
No, my ninety was a little bit low.
So, yeah, I got to go along with it.
I think if my motor finding itself, I could give up the car now. It was just quite a all near, you know.
Basically, I'd said the same, my bike was going off.
You want to hear? Here.
I have a alert radio that's going on. It's not, it's a bad, a lot of hell, like, I think, to a location. And just, uh, older doctor, nineteen, twelve, eleven, eleven, twenty, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-ten, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, sixty-ten, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, note in this photo, the recessed entry and the front porch. The structure was home to City Hall for one year in 1949. This photo was taken in 1949 and includes Capitola's first city council. In the background is the structure at 127 Monterey. In this photo, you can note that the recessed entry has been enclosed and addition in doors have been added to the front of the structure facing Monterey Avenue. The structure was converted back to residential in 1950. This photo was taken in the 50s on the 4th of July. The photo shows two existing doors facing Monterey Avenue and a side door leading off the front porch. In 1986, the use was converted to commercial. More renovations took place to the structure, including modifications to the roof and the original addition. Changes to the windows, design configuration and materials and the introduction of brick wainscoting around the base of the addition took place. The current application is to remodel the existing home to accommodate the residential use. Modifications to a historic resource require approval of a conditional use permit and design permit by the planning commission. Also, within SEQA, modifications to a historic resource must comply with the Secretary of Interior Standards to make a finding that there is no significant impact on the environment. As you can see in the side-by-side comparisons, the majority of the modifications to the historic structure have been within the east elevation oriented towards Monterey Avenue, shown within the white dashing. The portion of the structure that is true to its original form amassing is the north-south gable shown in the green dashing. Architect Dennis Diego has taken the approach to reintroduce distinctive historic materials, features and finishes that had been lost during previous modifications to the home within this portion of the structure. This is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standard for Rehabilitation Number Five, as shown on the screen. The plans include reintroduction through replication of the wooden roof collar ties. This feature will be replicated in material and form within the north and south gable ends. Also, the bargeboard ends within the south and north gables will be replicated. The window on the south elevation towards, oriented towards Loneway was a character-defining feature that will be replicated to match the original in-location-size material and mutton pattern on the south elevation. The plans also reintroduce a post in between the ribbon of new windows that span the historic porch, or the location of the historic porch in recent addition. This creates a visual element to expose the conventional structured framing and form that existed within the original structure. The east elevation has experienced numerous alterations over the years. As you can see in the image, in the late 1940s, a front porch element was added to bring, most likely to accommodate the city hall. There were a total of three doorways oriented towards Monterey Avenue. The building eventually evolved into its current state with the introduction of a new gable end facing Monterey Avenue and one entry for the retail shop. Because the existing addition is not historic, it is the appropriate place to make alterations to the design that are both differentiated from the historic yet compatible, consistent with standard number nine. The applicant is proposing to remove all existing windows and the entrance on the east elevation to accommodate the change in use back to residential. The new windows within the gable end will be raised to provide privacy for the residents. Leslie Dill, the historic architect hired by the city to review the project, made findings that the new window configuration within the existing addition and within the bedroom will be compatible with the historic due to its use of similar shingle cladding above the brick wainscoting, the scale of the windows and trim, and the scale of the brick pattern with respect to size and scale of the original materials. On July 23rd, 2014, the city received documentation from Leslie Dill of Archives and Architecture that the proposed modification to the historic structure comply with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Therefore, the SEQA exemption for compliance with the standards has been cited for this project. Development standards for the Central Village zoning district are set forth in the Central Village Design Guidelines. There are specific guidelines for the Loneway Residential Overlay District that are listed on the screen. The first three guidelines limiting use to residential, not allowing increase in habitable space, and requiring that the sidewalk right-of-way are maintained are all in compliance. The fourth guideline requiring that garbage and utilities are out of the public view has been conditioned to come into compliance prior to certificate of occupancy within condition of approval number 18. Staff recommends approval of the design permit and conditional use permit for 127 Monterey Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Other questions for staff?
I have none.
No.
No questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so this is the time when the applicant or the applicant's representative can come up and speak, if you would like.
I really have nothing else to add. I feel like the staff report-
Would you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. Mimi French. I am Craig's wife. Craig and I now own 127 Monterey. So, we're really excited about this project, and I think Dennis Diego did a wonderful job.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one question for Mimi. And you don't have to do this if you don't want to, and I don't want to impose it as a condition on the project. But would you be willing to put a small plaque on the Monterey side that identifies the building as Capitola's first city hall?
Sure. We have it on right now, on the Esplanade side. It's there. Did you realize?
That's what I meant, on the Esplanade. So, that's Monterey.
Yeah. It's on it now.
Is that going to remain?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll keep that on.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. Anyone else here tonight that would like to talk about this application? All right. I'll close the public hearing and ask the commissioners what they would like to do. Who wants to start?
I'm speechless tonight.
Note this date.
Well, you know, obviously, you know, with Kettman's House, there was a lot of concern about preserving the historical aspect of Loneway in that district down there, and this is the one building that's with, is it within the district? It's within the district, but it's a non-conforming, right? And this kind of brings it back more to the conforming aspect. Was it non-conforming?
This one's contributing.
It was a contributing one, then? Okay. And this, I think, even brings it closer to where we want Loneway to be. So, yeah, I could support it, and if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to approve.
And I would second.
Great. I support those comments, and I just want to applaud the applicant and their representative, their architect. This is, this is the model, model staff report and plans. These plans were so impeccably done and gave so much information, not to mention the fact that this house will be so lovingly restored to what we really want to see in the village. It's just heartening to see that there are still people who love Capitola and want to keep it look the same way, and I'm so happy to be able to vote yes for this. But I really want to say to staff, if we could get plans that looked like this every time, and it staff reports with this much information and this much delineation between historic, you know, that really gives us a good idea, it would be, make all of our jobs so much easier, and I don't know how you go about doing that. Maybe you have some suggestions, but this is, this is like the one we need to save and show future applicants so that it's clear what we, what we need.
We can work off that for submittal documentation and requirements for historic.
Great, thank you. And thank you, thank you, French family. That's so wonderful. So, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thankfully. Thank you. Fabulous. Okay, then. That concludes our public hearing, and those of you who are here for this, don't have to be polite and wait any longer. You go. I wish I had. I'm sorry to say that I forgot, it's a little late, but I forgot to say that this is a cable cast that's live on Charter Communication Cable Channel 8 and is being recorded and replayed on Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM, just in case you want to see it, on Charter 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be, always be viewed on the city's website, and that's www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight, I have a feeling is a new technician, Felicia. We haven't, we haven't worked with Felicia yet, I don't think. So, welcome to her, and I think we've, the rest of it, we've already taken care of. So, now that we've finished with public hearings, in my delinquent welcome, we will go on to the director's report, A being standard conditions of commercial uses. Staff report, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before you tonight is draft standard conditions of approval for commercial projects. These draft conditions will provide clarity of the process. They will also specify conditions related to different city departments that will be reviewed upon submittal of applications, and also require that all changes to approved plans be documented on paper and approved, as we've been working towards these past, this past year. The focus of the planning commission discussion tonight is on the standards of condition for design permits and for conditional, and conditional use permits for commercial additions and new construction. These are standard conditions that are applicable to all applications. In some circumstances, there, it has been noted when they apply to only specific circumstances, such as a conditional use permit for outdoor display of goods or dining. Standard conditions 1 through 30 are standard conditions, and then we also address signed conditions within conditions 31 through 34. I would like to note that this is a work in progress. Our ultimate goal is a comprehensive condition of approval manual with standard conditions, special conditions, and environmental conditions. So, we'll continue to bring forward standard conditions and hopefully have a manual to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And tonight, when we're discussing these conditions, if you could, whichever condition you would like to discuss, if you could bring up the number, where they are numbered, it will make the conversation easier, and I have them all available on slides, so we can go to the correct number. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there comments about this draft? I'll start. I've got a couple comments. On item eight, I noticed you, you talk about landscaping on number eight, and landscaping is talked about on 19. I think that's all. Have I missed any having to do with landscaping?
That's it?
I think those are the ones. I just was, you know, this, this is going to be a theme for what I'm going to talk about for the next, you know, after, in comments and all, and that is, now that we're in this new era with water conservation, I see it, I see it ramping up. I hear a friend who is working with the Water District talking about the fact that this is not going to go away, this is going to get worse and worse, and they're going to have more and more restrictions, and I feel like we need to be, as a city, more proactive about what we tell people about water use, and I, we don't really have anything about ziriscaping or anything about the kind of plants. And I kind of feel like it might be time to up the ante and help the Water District by figuring out a way to encourage, or not just encourage, but maybe require, that kind of planting, at least right now while we're in these situations. I'd be interested to hear what other commissioners had to say about that. I've got other things, but I, but maybe we could talk about that, to see whether there's any, anybody who has any thoughts about that. Do you feel that's too restrictive, or do you?
I think it certainly makes sense, either drought-tolerant type landscaping, artificial turf, those kinds of things.
Right. Is it, I mean, is it, can we go far enough to say that we don't allow lawns to be installed in Capitola anymore, or at least for the time being? I mean, I don't know.
So, right now, under the current process, applicants do need to get approval from the Water District on their landscape plans, and so we've typically deferred to them, but I think you're right. I think we do need to coordinate a little bit better and educate our applicants on what the requirements are going to be, so they know what to expect. I did hear a comment, I think recently, at a city council meeting with the same idea of restricting lawns, and the first thing that comes in my mind is trying to monitor and enforce that, and I think it would be challenging, particularly if someone's backyard and they have a patio and plans, and a year later they put in lawn. It would be really difficult to monitor and force.
I think any landscaping is difficult to monitor, because people, you know, will say their, their, you know, plants died because their irrigation failed and they didn't know it, or, you know, so it's all really difficult to monitor.
Especially if you can cut back other areas in your personal use, so your landscaping can survive and still be within those parameters of use.
And I'm there. I am there. I do cut back severely in the homes, so that my landscaping will survive, so I understand that. You know, I just feel like we could go a little further in educating them at this level.
Thank you, right.
Does it say anything here about, you know, putting, putting in plants that are approved by Soquel Creek Water District or Santa Cruz?
It does not, but we can add that.
Could you?
Native landscaping and ziriscaping.
I want to make a little bit of an objection. I understand where we're going with this comment. Landscaping is in the eyes of the beholder, and certainly we have a water emergency going on now, and I understand that, but that may be five years down the line, or it may next year change. Who knows? My concern is that, you know, there are, I'm kind of sounding like the people that protect animals, PETA. Well, you know, lawns are growing things, and bushes are growing things, shrubs are growing, trees are growing things, and I'd like the applicants to have some discretion. I certainly would encourage, through our standards, drought-tolerant plants. There's no argument there, but I think that we should not give our authority with regards to landscape over to the Water District or some other agency. I really feel strongly about that, and that was your last comment, was giving it to them.
I think it already is there.
They do. They review the plans.
I understand that, and I do have some specifics on those sections, and you said by number, but I wanted to let her get through hers, because I'll talk to that, too.
Yeah. I, I'm not trying to restrict anybody's, I mean, of all the people in this community, I have probably the biggest garden that anybody has. I have a garden on three different lots in Capitola, and it's huge, and it's, and I'm daily trying to figure out how to reduce the water on it. So, I know people can, can, we have to do it. I'm, you know, I've been dragging my feet, but I know it, we have to do it. I want to be a leader in this, and, and I don't think we need to look at it as restricting people. I think we need to look at it as educating them and guiding them in, in the directions that we know the Water District is, wants them to go in anyway.
So, if we use the word encourage, if we encourage applicants to use-
Well, I, oh, what happens, what happens at the Water District if they come in and they've got a lawn, or they've got an English garden, you know, with topiaries and all that planned? Is the Water District, at this point right now, going to say to them, no, we want to see more ziriscaping, or what do they say to applicant, our applicants?
I know that the recent project on Bay Avenue, I think it's 410 Bay Avenue, when they went through the process, their landscaping got more and more refined before it got to plenty- Planning Commission with them asking questions to the Water District.
So maybe they're doing it and we, all we need to do is let the applicant know prior to, because maybe that's the last agency they're going, one of the last agencies they're going to and they've spent all this money on these plans and now they, they tell them they can't do it. So maybe we need to tell them here or somewhere else that they're going to be, their, their plan, their landscape plans are going to be scrutinized by, and maybe they need to go to them first and find out what they, what they will allow.
Do, do we know if the Water District is requiring offsets for single-family home permits?
They, I, I know on 410 Bay Avenue, they required offsets.
So would a, would a drought tolerant landscape plan fall into that?
I can't give you a definite answer on that one.
Could you, could you get back to us on, on this, all these, you know, just let it, talk to the Water District and find out, you know, what they tell our applicants, if they think we should be telling them anymore, you know, run these conditions by them and see if they have any input on them, you know, we, I mean, we don't want to be, we are our own agency. We clearly don't want to, you know, let other agencies tell us what to do, but we don't want applicants having one agency telling them one thing and another, and then they go later and they've spent all this money and they can't do it or whatever. So I think it's, it's time for us to work more closely together.
Yeah, I think we can definitely do that and I just pulled up the zoning ordinance and we do have requirements for water efficient landscaping as well in the code, so we have the ability to make those requirements now. I think the situation is the district just probably takes it a little further than we do at, at the moment, but uh-
And to let people know that that district may take it further, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So if we could put that in here somehow, you know, you will be, you will be reviewed by the Water District in the, you know, so that, any place we could tell them, even if it's a repeated comment, I think the more we can tell them, the more it's going to get in there. Ron, did you have other things?
Yeah, I would like to go to item ten which is dealing exactly with what, or number ten in the, in the conditions, which is dealing exactly with the Water District, the Sanitation District, and central fire. And I think that the, this is kind of a, the wording bothers me a little bit. The applicant must provide documentation of plan approval. I would like to see that say agreement to serve because each one of those districts has the right to say, hey, we're going to serve you with water, we're going to serve you with sanitary facilities, we're going to protect you as a fire, a fire department. But the idea that they're going to approve plans that come to this city and this body in my personal belief is, is giving up authority that we should have and so I like the idea of agreements to serve and I just wanted to throw that out. I don't know how the rest of people feel. And if I can move on to my next one is number nine and I've always said this for years and years and that has the, the use of one, two, three acronyms there. And I think that, you know, this is a document that should be read by the public and know what, what it says and while some of us may know what these acronyms are, it's always hard when you have to go from the acronym page, which is either in the front or the back, and then try to apply it. So if we could, the first time it's used in a document, it's spelled out in its full and then put after the parentheses with what the, I'd like to see that. I also-
Also, Ron, also on that, are SMP and BMPs two different things or are those supposed to be the same acronym?
They're supposed to be different things.
Okay.
Okay. And the, the final one I had on these, on these conditions for commercial was number thirty-four which deals with the signs and it's, it's kind of a if no sign plans are submitted, the planning commission has not reviewed updated signs within the application. My objection is to the very last, after the, and approval by the appropriate authority. We need to spell out what the appropriate authority is and I know that when we do the sign ordinance, we will probably put it there, but it'd be also nice to put it here. I think if you have a good sign ordinance, it gives staff enough latitude to produce, to approve signs. Unusual signs will come back to us on a variance basis or some other basis and I think that, you know, the word appropriate, what it means to me and what it means to you may be two different things. I'm just trying to nitpick, I guess.
And the reason for not placing approved by the Planning Commissioner, approved by staff because it's really dependent on the application that comes forth.
Okay.
So if it fits within the existing sign that was there before, we could approve it administratively. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the comments you had also regarding the acronyms, it's an easy fix and I think a good comment. In regards to number ten with the districts, I, I think you're right with water and sewer, it's a well-served letter with fire, they actually do go out and do inspections.
Inspections, yeah.
So that's a, that's a current process and one of our intentions there was just again to educate them that there's another body out there that you need to work with and get approval from, so.
And, and the fire department's really looking for alarms and other things, you know, yeah. But I just think the idea that if they have a document that says those agencies are going to be serving them, once this structure, this development is built, I think that's a better way to go.
Sure.
I have one more thing. Doesn't appear to have any general guidelines for outdoor lighting? Is that going to be covered someplace else in the zoning ordinance or, I don't know, do we need a standard condition that kind of determines the, or spells out some general guidelines for outdoor lighting?
I think that's an area where the existing code is deficient that we should look at when we update it, to have some kind of standards for lighting that we can apply across the board.
But not in-
And we, we ran into that with the theater, as I recall.
But not in conditions, you're saying? You don't think it should be added to-
Right. Well, you know, I think at some point it should be, but we don't have a standard now.
Right, right. Okay.
I saw evidence of a, a past condition that all lighting should be, I think it's stated down directed and shielded, that was utilized, but then it hasn't been utilized more recently in staff reports.
I think, how about the, the city parking lot, when they did that, it was, and then also with the Toyota project, we used those standards.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, the mall was the impetus for the comment you made with regards to the downlighting for poles and structures. So lighting presents an issue, especially when the standards are too high and, you know, there are lots of good books on the market with regards to the amount illumination that different wattage and the rest of it will do without offending the neighbors and that's really where we're coming from.
And we could add a, a kind of more generic condition to say, you know, any light shall be pointed downward and shall prevent light trespass under adjacent properties, something like to that effect, without having like a lumen threshold or something.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and it also gets our foot in the door for a revision once the ordinances have changed and maybe that's a note we could put on, you know, somewhere on a, on a list that says, you know, when the ordinance are, are finished, take another look at the conditions for both residential and commercial and make sure that they work together. Do you have any more, Commissioner Gray?
No, I'm sorry.
Do you have any?
I really didn't have much. I'm pleased to see that we're continuing to work on these standard conditions. Mostly mine had to do with process and you can't really tell by here as far as the process. One was regarding number ten, especially in the commercial area with the water offsets and demands and they actually were talking about, you know, some type of, at least SoCal Water District have put some type of conditions on approving water meters in commercial projects. Is that something we could require the letters prior to or is this when they would come and they would see the standards of conditions? Because it seems to me we'd hate for them to go through a lot of work and then find out the Water District's not going to approve their project because of the water demands. And then also, again, this is just process, is zone five part of the sanitation district or is that something separate?
Yes.
No.
Oh, they're just, yeah, they're the stormwater.
Zone five is a flood control district.
And maybe, I don't know if that's something's in there. I know it, it caught me off guard when I had a bill from zone five in the middle of my project, so. And then the last part was, I think now we had discussed in our residential standards to have the property owner's sign understanding as opposed to just having someone who's, their representative's sign so they understand what those conditions are in case something changes and I don't know if we want to add that to this as well.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. I have a couple of others. Number twenty-six talks about if applicable, CUP for outdoor dining and seating display for the duration of the active permit, the outdoor seating. This talks about outdoor seating, but tell me the reason why we're not talking about indoor seating? Are we, did I miss it? Somewhere else?
Which number was that?
Number twenty-six, sorry.
That's okay.
You know, this was only if there was a conditional use permit for outdoor seating, but you're correct, within a restaurant use, we should have a condition for indoor seating.
Right. And should we have something having to do with parking? You know, that-
Yep, there should be one on parking. So, and just to follow up on, so the restaurant, one I should put within, for a restaurant use, to have a specific finding for that because it really is for a specific type of use.
Right.
There should be one, and let me find it, for parking.
Yeah, I recall talking about that. Twenty touches on parking.
Ten, parking spaces shall provide for onsite bicycle parking.
Yeah. There was one requiring that the parking that was, maybe it's twenty-three, for the duration of the active permit, the approved parking associated with the use permit must be maintained and approved. Number of parking spaces may not decrease. Parking spaces shall be striped and maintained. Signage identifying employee parking shall also be provided.
So there's a number of parking spaces, there's formulas for boat, for all types of businesses. Restaurants are one of those businesses. So maybe indoor parking.
Yeah.
Maybe we should have one that's, that says for your, for blank type of business, for this type of business, your parking requirements are this and shall not be exceeded.
Yeah.
It would be specific to whatever that applicant was applying for.
Yeah, whatever type of business they've got, whether it's a restaurant or a whatever. I like the fact that there's outdoor seating requirements. I don't know if I have support on the commission to go a little further with the sign, here I go with the signs again, with the signage portion of this, but what I don't see here is anything addressing violations of outdoor, of unapproved outdoor signage and unapproved outdoor advertising of any kind. So it's not just signage, it's dresses, old stock of, you know, whatever, you know, clothes, shoes.
Outdoor displays. I think twenty-seven touches on that, yeah.
Did it? Okay, I might have missed that here. Five says non-include CUP. For the duration of the active permit, no goods or services may be stored, displayed, and/or sold outside. Outdoor seating, dining, and displays limited to specific zones require approval of, of permits, condition use permit for outdoor seating dining, okay. Okay, so what I wonder is, you know, in other areas, you have said the words maintenance will be base, will be, non-maintenance will be a basis for review by the Planning Commission, that having to do with landscaping. Can we say the same thing about, you know, signage? Can we say, you know, signage that has not been approved with, you know, will be a basis for review?
Yep. Condition number twenty-nine, the application shall be reviewed by Planning Commission upon evidence of non-compliance with conditions of approval or applicable municipal code provisions.
Uh-huh. So how come you're spelling it out in, with landscaping, but you wouldn't spell it out with signs? You're spelling it out even further with landscaping.
I could probably remove it from the specific areas and just have twenty-nine as the catch-all.
I think it's, I think what we, what we're trying to do is to, is to instruct people so that we can go back and say, look, you, you should have read, this is what you should have read, not that they're going to read something that they should have read into it. I think, I think you're going in the right direction by saying with landscaping and I think we need to go there with signs too. I mean, the sign thing is completely out of control. It's crazy. It's everywhere now.
Sign and outside, outdoor displays are going rapid, I'll tell you.
Yeah. Both, everything, everybody, everybody's trying whatever they can and whatever they can get away with and they're getting away with it all, so they're going, yeah, I see that guy doing it, well, I'm going to do it. Let's do it. And, and let me just reiterate, this is what, this, we, so what we are doing is saying to our good merchants in our community, you who are doing the right thing are going to lose business because you're not, you're, you're doing the right thing by not having a sign, but the guy next to you who's selling the exact same thing can have something outside to help his business and we're going to let him do that to your detriment. I think we're giving the wrong message. Okay, I'm off my soapbox again. So what's the commission's feeling about adding that same language to?
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I don't, I think that twenty-nine actually says what you want. If you have non-compliance, it's going to be brought back, you know, type of thing. And I don't think you have to be redundant and spell it out, in landscaping, spell it out, in signs, spell it out, in everything, because non-conformance is non-conformance no matter what area it is. So, you know, I made mention to staff some weeks ago, probably a month ago, that I really feel that, you know, with the economy downturn, I turned kind of a, turned my head with regards to people that were violating our ordinances with regards to outdoor display and signs. But the economy has picked back up and we're starting to look like Coney Island and a junkie village and I spell out the village, but it's not only the village, I'll spell out Forty-first Avenue. I have never seen the outside of Orchard Supply look bigger than the inside of Orchard Supplies, a garden area, and this is not allowed in the zone and so you can take it from me because I said it last time and you said maybe staff should police some of this because the neighbors are not going to get into a fight, but I'm going to be the bad guy for a while and I'm going to start creating a list of what I see, sign violations and outdoor display violations and we can turn them in. That's what we got to, it doesn't have to be the staff that enforces it. We can send letters from the, from the city attorney's office and other, other ways to do it and we did it. We, Mick will tell you when we had forty-foot signs out on Forty-first Avenue, we got rid of them and it looked pretty clean. It's getting to look junky again.
They're going to start being forty feet if we, if we don't let them. Okay, how about this then? How about if we, if twenty-nine were to be put at the end and-
That's exactly what I was going to say.
And put embold, you know, embold it so that we-
Wrap it up.
Yeah, to wrap it up and-
And then just maybe you add examples being, maybe that's where you tie in landscaping, signs, lighting, all in one.
Yeah, that's good.
Including, but not limited to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we have codes and ordinances to enforce that.
But the ones that people violate the most be spelled out. I, I can live with that.
I agree. This is a, this is about getting information to them. They're acknowledging that information and we have the, I mean, for them to go read the codes and ordinances may be a little difficult, but, so that might work.
Good. Okay. So is this a draft going to come back to us again or?
Yep. In the end, you'll see the whole manual with all the updated changes and I can keep them-
In the end of what?
When we bring back the, a manual of standard conditions and I can keep red lines in there if you'd like to see where the changes have occurred so that when you see it-
That'd be great. Thank you.
You can see all of the changes.
Thank you, staff. Good work. Thanks. Anything else on this? We will move on to our next report, which is a community development report on their work plan, which is pretty, pretty substantial.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The purpose of tonight's report is to give you a refresher on community development departments, organization, our functions and responsibilities, and as well to inform you of the projects and activities we're currently working on, what we see coming around the corner and then what we anticipate working on further down the road. As your commissions aware, the department's been in an extended state of transition that probably began around 2011 with the termination of redevelopment and the resulting loss of funding and staff positions. And subsequent to that, we had a complete turnover in planning and today we have an entirely new staff. Now that we've been here for about a year and have had a chance to get settled in, kind of assess the community's priorities and the department's workload, we thought it would be an appropriate time to present you with our work program for your consideration.
That's great. Thank you so much for this overview.
So the community development department's comprised of two divisions. We have the building and planning divisions. We operate with an approximately $695,000 annual budget. In part, that funds four and a half full-time equivalent staff positions. Building has a building official and a building inspector and in planning- And in planning, we have the community development director, a senior planner, and our half-time assistant planner. The building division is primarily responsible for issuing building permit, doing plan checks and inspections. They also take care of our code enforcement as it relates to building violations. They are responsible for doing code updates and maintenance as the codes change every three years. And they also administer and maintain our green building program. In planning, we're responsible for doing the current planning, that's processing discretionary permits that come before the planning commission and, in some cases, at the staff level. The advanced planning, where we update and maintain our various codes, ordinances, and regulations. We handle the code enforcement for zoning violations. And then we also administer the city's affordable housing programs and prepare the bulk of the city's grants and oversee their administration. So, just to give you an idea on how the workload is distributed, building's primary responsibility is issuing permits and inspections. We would estimate on average that takes up eighty-five percent of their time, with about ten percent being allocated towards code enforcement and about five percent to its maintenance and updates of its building and associated codes. In planning, we estimate about sixty percent of our time is devoted to current planning activities. Advanced planning, probably about twenty-five percent, ten percent to affordable housing programs, and then five percent to code enforcement. And just to kind of reiterate, this is, this is an average. These numbers would change on any given week depending on what's hot on the stove and other things that may not be quite as pressing. So, the building division currently with their building permits, plan checks, and inspections. This past fiscal year, they issued four hundred and ten permits with a total building valuation of seventeen million dollars. That's up slightly from the previous year with four hundred and three permits and eleven million dollars in valuation. The increase in valuation is largely from Toyota, who pulled their permits and paid their fees this past fiscal year. They also do the code enforcement and then again updating the codes. One thing that they're currently working on right now is deploying a new and improved permit tracking software. As you may be aware, we've had an antiquated building permit software around for several years. It crashes daily. We're finally getting a new program up and running that eventually planning will also use so that we can integrate all of our permits, track them, pull data much more easily, and it should be very helpful. It'll also allow the building inspector, when he's in the field, to do some work remotely so he doesn't have to come back into the office. It should help our efficiency as well. Some of the things around the corner and further down the road, we'd like to get our building inspector certified as an ADA inspector. Right now, we contract those services out to a third party. We'd like to get those, that specialty in-house. In conjunction with the zoning ordinance update, we will be updating our green building ordinance and taking a look at that. As some of you may recall during the general plan, there was some discussion as to whether we should update it and make the requirements more stringent or if it's the same as Title twenty-four, if we should just repeal the ordinance. My suspicion is with the climate action plan, we're probably going to need to keep it and make it more stringent. We also would like to create some more customer service guidance documents, frequently asked questions, handouts, things again to inform and educate our customers so they understand the process and what they're about to be involved in before they're at the end of it and wishing they had known at the beginning what they did now. We'd also like to develop a web-based building permit cost estimator so that applicants could estimate the cost of their permits at home from the city's website. And then finally, we have a continuing effort to expand and improve our website content. There's not a lot there. A lot of it's outdated. It's been something we've been meaning to get to, and it's one of those things that it's difficult to rise to the top of the pile, but it's something we do want to get done. So, in current planning, our discretionary permit processing workload, this past year, we, we entitled one hundred and eighty-five permits. Fifty-two of those required public hearings either before the planning commission or city council. And again, that's up slightly from the previous year when we had one hundred and sixty-six permits and forty-eight public hearings. And I would note that this information was updated since the staff report went out. I believe I incorrectly showed that the public hearings were separate from the total permit count. We're currently working on two major discretionary projects. We have the Monarch Hotel, which you're all aware of. And we also have an application in for a condo conversion of the Antigua Apartments that would require a series of amendments to the general plan, the housing element, the municipal code, the local coastal program. So, if that goes forward, that's going to be a project that requires a lot of work. Some of the potential future projects that we anticipate is the Village Hotel, that Barry Swenson's been looking at, a new and expanded library. We're meeting currently with the library subcommittee to talk about location and design. We recently received $383,000 in a grant to improve the grounds at the Rispin Mansion. We intend to put out an RFP here shortly to get a designer and then to do the sequel work associated with that project. As you're aware, we've been working for a long time with Metro and the mall operators to move the transit center location from the front of the mall to the side over by Claire's. The city, the city council also last month agreed to move forward on investigating a city hall redevelopment project. If that came to fruition, it would certainly require a lot of time and staff resources to process. And then finally, the Thirty-eighth Avenue Senior Apartments, which the planning commission heard probably about fifteen months ago. We've been fielding several calls from prospective buyers who'd like to come in and amend that application. So, that's a possibility that that'll be coming in sometime in the next year or two. In advanced planning, as again you're well aware, we got the general plan update done last month, and now we're really turning our focus towards the zoning code update. That's going to be an extensive, long, arduous process. And in conjunction with that, we're going to need to update our LCP, our local coastal program. We anticipate that once the zoning code was adopted by city council, it would require another nine to fifteen months to reach an agreement with the coastal commission to amend our LCP. We've also resumed work on our climate action plan. We intend to get that done this year. There's a lot of work involved, and there's going to be a lot of spin-off work created from that document. We're currently also working on updating our fee schedule with the intent of improving cost certainty with our customers. The goal is going to be to create a cost-neutral restructuring of the fee ordinance. We'd like to convert many of our deposits to flat fees and then eliminate some obsolete fees and reduce fees that currently we think are too high where we're routinely giving refunds on deposits. This week, we also issued an RFP for a consultant for, to help us prepare the housing element update. That is due in December two thousand and fifteen. We expect to have a consultant on board probably sometime in October, and we'll get to work right away. The good news with the housing element is the regional housing needs assessment numbers this cycle were the same as last cycle. Most of the opportunity sites we identified during the last update are still available. I think we're going to be able to accommodate most of those sites with maybe five to ten units that we're going to have to find homes for in the city. So, it shouldn't be quite as difficult as past updated efforts were. Some of the future projects and activities, we've talked in, at the planning commission several times and in the GPAC, that we'd like to develop a historic resource preservation program. Right now, there's really a dearth of guidance for not only staff but our customers on how to treat historic resources. We view that as a priority, you know, once time and resources are available. We'd also like to create new and revised residential and commercial design guidelines. We also need to update our ordinances for noise and their subdivision ordinance. Both are very outdated. They have a lot of internal inconsistencies, and they're difficult to use. For instance, the noise ordinance currently doesn't discuss any noise limits as relates to construction noise, operation noise. I think those are, those are comments I heard a lot when we were updating the general plan, that we want to protect residential neighborhoods from things like noise and lights and other nuisance effects. Within your packet, I also did include a list of our various general plan action items, of which there are many. The majority of those are ongoing kind of coordination efforts, but there are some finite action items that we're going to have to follow up with in the coming years. I mentioned it previously, the climate action plan is going to create a number of action items and ordinance amendments. So, that's going to keep us busy for the foreseeable future as well. Longer term, this is not a high priority, but ideally, I'd like to have sequel guidelines and thresholds of significance so that for the few projects, when they do come in that need an EIR or a more complicated mitigated negative declaration, we have thresholds and locally accepted standards for how to deal with those issues. Currently, we have to look at our neighbors and state standards and then try to make them fit within Capitola, and sometimes it's pounding a square peg into a round hole. Code enforcement, as we talked, I think at the last hearing, Capitola does operate a primarily complaint-based code enforcement program, certainly as it relates to zoning. On average, we probably handle sixty to eighty code cases per year. And that's only a fraction of the number of calls we get. Ordinarily, we'll get calls, and then staff has to, you know, investigate and determine if there's actually a code enforcement case, and if there is, then we take enforcement action. Typically, we have several simultaneous code cases going at once. Fortunately, most of our violations are resolved very cooperatively with our customers, but those that aren't can take significant staff time and resources to resolve. There are some matters that we take proactive code enforcement actions on, and those generally involve life and safety violations through the building department. There have been, I've heard a number of people say they would like a more proactive code enforcement program with the city. That's something we could certainly do, but there would be resource implications. Either we'd be looking for additional staffing or to reprioritize our workload to focus more time on code enforcement.
Rich, along those lines, and I know there's, this has been suggested in the past, and there's been reluctance, but we have, what, two, three code enforcement officers that are part of the police department?
The community service officers?
Community service officers. They used to be called code enforcement officers.
Oh, okay.
I would think there'd be some way we could utilize some of their time to do this.
It would be a possibility. I mean, if, if the city council gave us direction to, you know, have a proactive code enforcement policy, I think we'd work through the city manager, decide how we're going to allocate resources to it, whether that be in the planning department, police, a collaborative effort, or what have you. But that, that certainly could be a good, a good way to address it.
To me, it just makes sense because, I mean, if you look at our discussion tonight, that's where the biggest concerns lie within the city, is people violating the various codes and requirements on their, on their businesses and homes. And if we could utilize some of their time, it would certainly relieve some of the burden on the planning staff.
So, affordable housing, some of the active projects we have right now. We still administer a security deposit program, which assists low-income families with the security deposits. They can move into a home. We have an emergency assistance program that's administered by the community action board. We fund that to provide low-income families who are, who are under threat of being evicted from their homes to give them one or two months' rent so they can stay in their house. We've had longstanding, we have an inclusionary housing program that we continue to administer and manage. And there's a number of loans that we've issued throughout the years through either the redevelopment agency or the city, or grant monies that we routinely have to monitor. There's four mobile home parks that still have existing regulatory agreements with the cities. We monitor and enforce those, and we frequently do income and asset certifications for prospective buyers and renters of affordable units to make sure they qualify for the program guidelines. A couple of things related to affordable housing that we're looking to do in the future is to reinstate our residential rehabilitation program. You may recall, we had that program in the past where owners of a mobile home park could get a grant or a loan to put a new roof on or provide ADA accessibility features. We'd also like to reinstate the mortgage assistance, formerly known as the first-time homebuyer program as well. And we have a current grant application out for a half a million dollars that would fund those projects if it's awarded. And we should find out sometime here in August. In terms of grants, you know, we're constantly on the lookout for grant opportunities that'll help us fund various city projects and priorities where we're short of funding. We do prepare our grant applications in-house. Carolyn Flynn, who's been working with the city, I think, since nineteen ninety-seven, works one or two days a week to help us get that work done. And then we touched on some of the grant administration reporting. Some of those examples are the Bay Avenue Senior Apartments. We still have ongoing monitoring and obligations. We had a Prop eighty-four grant and a DRI grant with the general plan update that just closed out, so those reporting requirements will drop by the wayside. And then we just received this $383,000 grant for the Rispin, and that'll require some oversight and administration.
And that's a milestone. How long have we tried to get grants for the Rispin? Since the eighties?
So, we mentioned the $500,000 RCDBG application we have out. Some of the other things we're constantly looking for monies to help us do is to, one, assess the Stockton Avenue Bridge to find out what alternatives there are to ensure that in the event of a flood that we don't lose the bridge, given that it's really only one of two ways to get around Capitola, as well as relocating our emergency responders out of this flood plain and tsunami zone. And we've recently also begun reaching out to see if there's any monies out there that could help us improve and upgrade the wharf, as well as the jetty out there because they're both falling into somewhat disrepair, and we'd like to bring them back up to date. So, the other thing that we do that is really different from all of our other activities is process and operational improvements. These aren't finite activities, but really are intended to be continual efforts to improve, to provide high-quality customer service, and to provide our services in a time and cost-effective manner. We presented our conditions of approval manual earlier today, or a component of it. We're going to continue to work on that as we move forward. We're also in the process of creating a permit processing guide that'll just be a simple handout that gives the average person on the streets that has no idea what a discretionary permit is, the idea of what the requirements are, what the time and cost involved will be. So, again, that they have a better idea of what they're getting into before they write a check and submit plans with the city. We're also working on creating internal offering procedures and checklist to make sure that when we do our reviews of permits, that we're consistent and that we don't miss anything. We'd also like to do that for our code enforcement and affordable housing programs. Down the road, we'd like to, again, improve our website, provide electronic applications online, have our guidance documents, and then up-to-date lists of our active permits and their status. Post any of the guidance information that we create on the website. And then again, should we get around to creating sequel guidelines, thresholds of significance. So, some of the challenges that we have regarding our work program is our ongoing work commitments. We're, we're stretched pretty thin at the moment with the zoning ordinance, the climate action plan, the housing element, in addition to our day-to-day functions of processing permits and administering housing and code enforcement programs. As I mentioned early in the presentation, updating the zoning ordinance is going to require us to update our local coastal program. I think that's a risk that we're going to face going forward. Coastal commission's going to have to buy off on it. They may not agree with the way we want to run our city. So, that's going to be a long, difficult process, we expect, and will probably carry us forward for the next couple of years before we would get that adopted. And the other risk I should point out with it is we could adopt a zoning ordinance. It'll go into effect outside the coastal zone, but not in the coastal zone. So, it's very conceivable that we could be sitting around for a year with two different zoning ordinances. I went through our future work commitments. There's a lot of them. There's a lot of things we want to do. I think a lot of it's important work, but there is limited bandwidth to get it done. In addition, the climate action plan, I do have real concerns about the number of work and ordinance amendments and programs that are going to spin off of that plan, that's going to cost money and staff resources. Housing elements are also notorious for requiring rezones and ordinance amendments. So, our challenge is really going to be managing increased workload demands with our resource limitations. And I think it's going to be incumbent upon me and our staff to set and maintain our priorities as directed by the council and planning commission, and to continually look for ways to increase our efficiency. And, you know, we'll try to use targeted contract support staff as needed to help us get through the workload peaks. But no doubt, it's, it's going to be difficult to get everything done in a timely, cost-effective manner when you're trying to juggle so many things at once. So, that concludes my presentation, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Well, you touched on one thing that has kind of derailed a lot of these work projects you've, you've mentioned, and that's the lack of continuity in your department. So, I figure, since you've put this together, you're obligated to stay here for at least three or four more years to see its completion through.
Well, that's my hope, and you're absolutely right. You know, it was interesting, within my first few months on the job, while looking through the various, you know, documents that the city had, I found a list of projects that a previous planning director wanted to get done probably seven, eight years ago, and probably two-thirds of those are on the list today. So, not a lot has changed, but, you know, we really do want to chart a course to get some of that work done and behind us.
Great.
Very good. I have some comments too, yeah, Commissioner.
I just...
I just, a comment, Rich. When you hand out materials, page sixty-seven and sixty-eight, I had to get a magnifying glass to read those pages and they're probably the most interesting part because they're kind of like a wish list and, you know, for two more pieces of paper, we couldn't read them.
Did, did you get the eleven by seventeen printouts?
You didn't get this?
Because we were aware of that and we didn't want to put them in everybody's.
I don't have the plan.
Look on your iPad, Ron, you can do that.
I don't have an iPad.
That will help.
That would help, that would help. Any other comments or questions?
I had a few. My first thought was, is that all? Is that all you have to do? I wondered about the ADA certification for the, for the building inspectors and wondered if it really is prudent for us to, given that we just don't seem to keep building inspectors very long here in Capitola, if we're spending the money to certify each one, if maybe that's the reason it's better to think about, you know, contracting that out? I don't know. I just brought that up.
Yeah. We've had a discussion about it and there's disagreement, I think amongst building officials on whether or not there's a state requirement that a city have an in-house ADA certified specialist. But most seem to think that it is required and that's the state's position, but it seems sort of absurd. I mean, there's a lot of cities that are much smaller than Capitola even to think that everybody's got to have one of these high-paid specialists on staff that maybe spends ten percent of their work week looking at that stuff.
I know. It just seems like a perfect contract job, you know?
Yeah.
Somebody who really, really, really is up on all the latest. I mean, why have, you know, eighty people be up on the latest when it takes one person a full-time job to do it for several municipalities?
Right.
Let's see. You were talking about code enforcement, you know, is, is there anything that we can do to, you know, can we ask the city to, ask the city council to, you know, to consider funding code enforcement as a commission? Should we? I mean, I'm asking the commissioners too. Is that something that commissioners, you know, maybe if they hear that that's important to us and we hear it's important, important to other members of the community, maybe, you know, the council could hear from us formally that we would like to see them work that into a budget in the future. It seems to always slip back and not get budgeted for.
I think it's, it's certainly something in your purview that you can do and I'd be happy when I present the same presentation to the city council to share that the planning commission, if that's your desire, would like them to consider that.
Yeah.
I think there's also, well, tomorrow's the last day for filing for city council and there's a majority of city council seats up for grab this time. It's certainly going to be my, I believe that I'm going to ask questions with regards to code enforcement because I think the town is moving backwards instead of stepping forward into the future. I think it's becoming junky and, and trashy and certainly that's going to, you know, affect my vote. So I think that's another way you can handle it.
Yeah, maybe we'll want to wait until we get a new council to send that message if we decide we want to send it. Is there anything that we can do in our ordinances or our policies or whatever that would make enforcement easier for staff, you know, so that you have more teeth or you have, you know, are we, are we looking at this the wrong way and making a lot of work for you staff that could be streamlined in some way by when we do the ordinances or whatever that, you know?
I think so. I think having an updated ordinance where we, you know, really think through some of the enforcement aspects of it when we're putting it together and make our jobs a lot easier. I mean, there's some things, I think if you look through the code, you'd say, well, that doesn't even make sense. Why should we enforce it?
Right.
So there are times where we look at and have to make judgment calls on whether or not it's something that we really want to enforce and spend city resources to do.
Right.
So hopefully it'll become easier and more transparent.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was the Rispin Mansion Park redo and is it, is it the staffs and the councils thought that it would be, the work would be done with a mind to bring at least some of it back to its historic nature? I know some of it will be walking paths and things that are more pertinent to today's life and living, you know, but some of it will also be that historic element.
That's the idea. I know we've talked about restoring the fountain back, back to its original form and function.
We can't have the big lawn unfortunately anymore. There's a beautiful, big oval-shaped lawn, but that's not going to happen probably.
That's going to be the idea. You know, one of, one of the tricks and I've heard comments on both ends is the wall, you know, should we keep the wall there or not?
Right.
A lot of folks I think would like to see it come down so you have improved visibility from Wharf Road.
And security.
Others think, you know, it's really part of the fabric there, so. But I think overall, yeah, we want to maintain the historic character of that site to the extent we can. And of course, this won't affect the mansion itself, it's just the grounds and the exterior.
Good, thank you. Yes?
You know, one of the comments you made, and I want to make sure I heard you right, and it had to do with building department and building inspectors. Let's see if I heard you right first. You were thinking, or the city was thinking about a contract service rather than certifying in-house. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's what Commissioner Ortiz and I were just discussing. We, we were planning on getting our building inspector certified as an ADA specialist. There is a state law that a lot of folks think requires us to have a person in-house in a contract, although we've been getting that services through a contract for the last few years at least.
You know, I guess I'm old enough to remember when we had contract building services here in the city and it went very, very poorly. For a long period of time, we had a building inspector that really specialized in doing drywall and sheet rock and stuff like that, didn't know much about the mechanical codes and some of the other things and really did a disservice to the community. So I hope, whatever way we go, just because we have to have a specialty in ADA, let's have them have a specialty in everything, not in a specific expertise.
Yeah, and, and the idea would be that our existing building inspector would be that person. We wouldn't want to bring in another person.
All right. Well, I, this, this work really impressed me. I'm so glad you did it and
Thank you.
I'm really hoping you two stay, stay here long enough to get
I think we are too.
the majority of this done. We'll try to help you whatever way we can. Okay, that concludes that portion of our meeting tonight. Are there any commission communications, commissioner communications?
No, you know, just last thought, we were talking about enforcement and we talked earlier about landscape and needs of how, how we deal with people applying for permits, but I think if the city is going to go down this enforcement road, we need to be above reproach and I can say I, I think the city lacks a little bit right now on our landscaping of the city. So I think if we want to do that, then we need to set the standard on whatever that's going to be, so.
Do you, have you had discussions with the, the building department and all that about specifics?
We've, we've had some discussions about, you know, the grass down on the esplanade down there and, and some of these areas and some of the local plantings and stuff. So I know they're fighting the battle. What do we do with, we don't have water, we should, so, so should we set the standard by saying we're not going to water and set the standard or, but if we're going to start enforcing some of these codes about landscaping, then maybe we need to take a really good look at how we do that and not just letting all of our grass and, I mean, you look at the bark where you go up towards Wharf Road and they just, they took out the grass and just put a bunch of bark there. And I don't know, maybe that's the standard the city wants, but, you know, it's a, I guess it could be a rough road if we're trying to tell residents and commercial people applying for permits what we want and we don't live up to the standard ourselves, so. Just a thought.
You know, and that's, I, I agree with you and I, that's always a problem when here we are in a drought telling people to pull up plants and put in new plants. New plants notoriously take a ton of water. So in the short run, we're not really going to be saving water by putting in new plants. We're going to, you know, it will in the long run, but in the short run, those plants need lots of water in order to survive. So I, but I agree that we need to be, have our own act together impeccably. We should anyway, no matter what, you know, we just should. Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay, then we will adjourn to the meeting of September fourth here in council chambers. Thank you, staff. Good work.